Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we open?
So, the board of select management is proud to listen to your comments for maybe a great day in a week. I feel parents of the town have started so quickly here. And at this point, I did explain what I learned from the school committee and the general discussion that superintendent Simon had proposed perhaps that something could be adopted, a reduction in the subsidy by six, actually fifty-three thousand dollars by using one time five hundred thousand dollars money and then some pro per cuts on the budget. And the board really doesn't feel comfortable taking a vote on whether we can do something we have had or have to take a look at whether we can make a modest increase to what we've got on the table at three point seven five. And we've had our town administrator take a look at that. The board has been apprised where we were at. But I think as a board, we really wanted to know that the school committee was committed to that reduction. No vote had been taken thus far. So that's kind of where we're coming from.
One second.
Yes, so can you?
Yep.
Okay, so just Randy, myself, and Laura had a quick call right just to kind of go through what we're trying to accomplish tonight. And we all posted up very similar. We're going to talk about the respective budgets and assessments. So just so we're clear on some ground rules that we had all talked about is we have three joint meetings all going at the same time. So the chair will recognize anyone from their committees that wanted to speak. And then what we had also, and we didn't have any public comment posted tonight, just because again, we're under the clock. We really have basically less than an hour before women needs to go into their board's meeting and do some business. So what we had talked about was Hanson providing it up, making this larger, just in, and then breaking out kind of into our respective groups to have a conversation. I know Hanson was there. And then see what if anything we want to do. I think what the three of us collectively said was at this point, we can either do something, or if we don't do anything, then we're going to build into what we have in terms of our respective town meetings. So that was kind of what we had talked about. We do have two folks on the phone. We have a hard stop at six fifteen. So if that works for those, we can kind of break into those separate sessions in terms of having those conversations. And at that point, you know, any because they'll be in session wants to make any type of vote, they can certainly do that. So that's kind of where we left it. That's acceptable.
Yes, Mr. Chair?
I'd like to make a motion.
So did you agree with that?
I did.
Okay.
Still like to.
Like to make a motion to appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from the Woodman Hansen Regional School District Excess and Efficiency Fund balance for the purpose of reducing the FY twenty four operating assessment for the town of Woodman and Hanson.
Second. Okay, so we have the school committee motion. I guess you guys just kind of be honest with us a little bit about that.
Did you just say only five hundred thousand and not the full of six hundred and thirty?
Well, the second portion will be, the second portion of the motion per se, or the separate motion, will be to certify the Woodman Hansen Regional School District fiscal year 2024 budget in accordance with the PK through twelve.
Yeah, so I don't, let's just do one motion at a time.
Okay, and that's where I was going.
So just so folks understand, the school committee, the school committee budget is quite large in terms of the gallant of what we have to do. So there is a vote for the budget, and then there are votes for assessments. All those have to be done. So the motion to the president is simply for utilization. I mean, indeed, which will be the first step in the process. So I guess again, that kind of runs in the school committee meeting, or at least over here. So discussion, we have a move on.
I do have discussion.
Fred?
I do feel it's important for us to take this action, otherwise I would not have made that motion. I do want to precaution everybody that it will be our job on the school committee to go into next year, knowing that we're putting ourselves behind the eight wall. I don't want much the towns to, if they utilize any one time monies as well. We're going to have to have a plan for those monies before we even get twenty increases for next year. But face where we are today with the education of the students coming out COVID, providing level services that are still needed. We have no choice unfortunately right now other than to do this and be able to take the step forward. So I just want to make sure that everyone's going in with their eyes wide open. I myself believe that it's a necessary legal that we need to do.
Other folks?
Anybody else?
So I'll say something. I believe that, so while I appreciate where we're at and that there are some actions that have to be taken, I also think it's important to understand where we are. And I don't think the school committee is on a high terms of what it is to do funding for. So while I would personally support utilization of one time money, when I do look at budgets for the school and the towns, I think we're in this together. And I'm hoping that's why we're here tonight. And I'm hoping as we move forward, that those conversations would occur tribe party in terms of what we need to do, because the school committee doesn't have the ability to raise revenue. So I think while I appreciate Mr. Small's comments, I would absolutely make it clear that I think there's a large conversation that involves all these groups globally going forward in terms of what we do going forward, because I think that's the way. Anyone else?
Yeah.
So I agree with everything that's being said. We always talk about getting together and talking about things beforehand. And we keep doing this every year. So I hope with the understanding that everybody understands here, that when we have a budget meeting that's open to everybody, they're not closed meetings, they're not private meetings, and then we hope that everybody would attend. If you folks on both boards have meetings about the budget, the school budget, we would appreciate knowing ahead in advance that you're going to be talking about it. We'd be glad to attend.
And if you can keep it to the motion ahead. So we're right, this motion is strict. We're in school committee mode right now.
Right, so that I want to just agree with Chris about the but going forward with that.
Okay, any other discussion?
They have one there.
Who has one?
They have.
So I'm thinking of this five hundred thousand one time funds and also the potential one time use of six hundred thousand dollars for special education expenses, tuition for out of district students. That has been presented by the legislature and this, they have approved fourteen percent increases for out of district special education schools to authorize increases in tuition bills to school districts for the cost of those out of district special education students. The school committee has previously discussed this, and if that fourteen percent increase in tuition rates, that we would see those bills coming in September. If that happens, there are funds available in the school district circuit breaker fund. That would be one time use to pay those bills coming up with an increase. However, that increase would be approved by these out of district schools, and they would continue to charge those tuition increases the following year and the following year and the following. So that solution to use one time circuit breaker funds would just be a Band-Aid for this upcoming year, which is that intent and purpose of those funds for that one year. But if we consider this five hundred thousand one time use, plus what we know, we're talking about for special, that's now a one point one million dollar gap to start off and fill the following fiscal year. I'm not going to get into any other potential one time use and so forth, but that's a large expense to look at for FY twenty five.
Mr. Chair?
So I think rather than going back, we have a motion on table, right? So again, that.
We can move the motion. I just wanted to speak to the circuit breaker. The circuit breaker will increase.
So right, again, if we have now two months, forty-five minutes, if we're going to do something to get through at least four votes, then everyone smokes. So if folks want to mind, that's mine. But I'd like to give everyone opportunity to start going back and forth. So yes.
Back to the motion. So when we met the school committee last week, the reason we didn't take a vote was because we didn't know what you all were thinking. We didn't have the opportunity to talk as rewards to discuss these options together. And I personally and Hanson and everybody on the board, I was cautious to take a vote to US funds if and to cooperate, if that cooperation was to be met. So I guess the question is, we have a motion. So what is the next step? Or do we have cooperation? Or are we right back to where we started, why we have this meeting? I mean, we are on a tight crunch, and we need to just get right to it. So can we?
So I think this is why we talked about, and opposed people to all kind of get involved in that and come back. But unfortunately, this motion may get itself here. So here we are. We have a motion. I don't think it would be appropriate to have a lot of back and forth, unfortunately, because that's now where we're at. And so I think we have a motion on the table that we can vote or support or not, I would suggest. Again, we can do whatever we want. It's the school committee's side, we can have such a thing.
Okay, move to the vote.
Move to the vote.
Okay, so roll call vote. I want to start the fill top of the vote with Glenn and Michelle. You can still hear me, Glenn.
Is he in grade the rest, Roger? Look what's the motion?
So the motion is that basically I'll clarify this is five hundred thousand dollars E and D for FY twenty four. I'm just looking for a vote. Yes, or?
It's one time.
One time.
Okay.
So it's a part of the. Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, Dawn?
No.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Beth?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. So now we need to revote the budget. This does require a two thirds vote.
Like the motion will be certified the Woodman Hansen Regional School District fiscal year 2024 budget in accordance with the PK through twelve Woodman Hansen Regional School District Agreement, section four, paragraph E two, in Master and Watch chapter seventy-one, section sixteen, capital B, at fifty-nine million, nine hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Second.
And just a question for clarification, question for clarification purposes. So this budget reflects the removal of the robotics and the foreign language changes and utilization. Okay, everyone on the committee clear on that?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. So Glenn and Michelle, hopefully you heard that this is the budget with the five hundred thousand E and D and the removal of foreign language and robotics. We'll do a roll call vote. Glenn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Beth?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, Fred, we got to do the assessments.
I move to set the fiscal 2024 Woodman Hansen Regional School District operating assessment for the town of Woodman in accordance with the PK through twelve Woodman Hansen Regional School District Agreement, section four, paragraph E two, in Master and Watch chapter seventy-one, section sixteen, capital B, at seventeen million, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Did you want me to do Hanson at the same time? Or did they have to be?
I think we have to do them individually. Yes, individually, just now. Any discussion? All right, we'll move to the vote. So Glenn and Michelle, this is the Hanson assessment. I'm sorry, the Woodman assessment, apologies. Glenn?
I vote yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Beth?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, Fred, do you want to keep going?
Keep going.
I move to set the fiscal 2024 Woodman Hansen Regional School District operating assessment for the town of Hanson in accordance with the PK through twelve Woodman Hansen Regional School District Agreement, section four, paragraph E two, in Master and Watch chapter seventy-one, section sixteen, capital B, at thirteen million, nine hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Glenn and Michelle, hopefully, did you hear that okay?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move to the vote. Glenn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's carried. Okay, well, we've taken some votes.
Will you allow us to go and, and how is this going to work? It's going to be awkward. I mean, it's a public meeting. I don't mind. But do you guys want to talk first? Or do you want us to, or?
You're the guest. You're the guest.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your hospitality.
Yeah, Taylor's like, yeah, you're the guest. Randy's like, well, I don't.
So to clarify, and I guess Eric and Mr. Sandbrook, if we were to come up to meet the current assessment, it would be a gap of one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars from where we're at now?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Sandbrook, you prefer? Okay. And we feel that we could do this by taking one time money, which is a recurring theme. It's a recurring theme amongst all of these boards and something that should be on the record, that this is one time money, which means the problem's going to be worse next year.
Yes.
That's just my little, you know, soliloquy on that. Okay, so and we, we could take one time money and make that back. Okay, so what is the voting?
The school committee's already laid a fake. I think taking votes on everything before we even had a chance to speak. I'll make a motion right now that we use the one hundred and sixty-six thousand one time money to get it done the way we, we need to do it. You know, anybody that saw our little meeting before knows that Joe brought up some great points. And I'm not going to be here much longer, but I would recommend to all three committees that we sit down and discuss this so that we, we don't go two weeks before the meeting. And so it was a great idea by Joe, and Dawn is absolutely right, I put the Band-Aid on it. But at least we get to it this year. And then, you know, we've been on, I've been on board six years, same as Laura, we've never done this before. This should have been done a long time ago. But we can't bring up the past. What we need to do is look at the future and get these three boards together to discuss this long before April. So.
So I have a motion on the table?
Okay, yes.
Go to the second.
Sir.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Hill?
I just, I thought I don't think I'm against anything. Three point seven five is more than two point five. And what they're asking for is nine percent.
That's not, that's their meeting. They're discussing. We can't say anything.
We just.
Yep, you're not, you're not.
I know what I'm doing. But that is, the rest of the town is held. So we go, if we go to three point seven five, which is what we discussed as a group, we're still taking away from other town, other departments of the town. So it's still three point seven five was, is in my mind, a little bit too much. But then to say that they use one time funds to go up to the five percent or pretty close to five percent, by concern then, next year, I think you're just going to five percent above, two point five percent above the nine percent actually we're adding this year is fully, and we need, we need to bring this in here. I'm not sure how we can do that, but I'm not going to go for one hundred and sixty-four. I also add one hundred and fifty-five.
I always say, you know, for me, it's, I'm giving either one of us to just make sure that it goes, it's getting so that we can be halfway. And I just want, first of all, I really appreciate all our, like, present for you guys doing, on a routine basis, as well as you. There is those things in the decision of our time, and I'm specific to us to versus what the school budget does in general, you know, a hundred percent that it was to be in the saddle. So I understand the situation. So I have all those district schools, sort of, I understand any thoughts about that as well. But the fact that I was talking to some people, I know this one discussion developed a little more. By, because we're putting ourselves in a really sophisticated role, and we have to start our own policy set, and there's going to be some larger financial and operating consequences and decisions ongoing. And I think that, you know, I, goes without saying, we are personally as well as we receive them, and we're in a really difficult position right now. I'm going to love the season, involve these one time funds being utilized to, to fund positions and fund workers. I really should involve in, we're not, um, due to, to not, we're moving this safely, because these one time funds, both are operating possible forward. As a result of that, we end up putting ourselves in a system of dispossessing, or something for something. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to do this, and we'll do this all in the future. And this is the second.
I'm just sorry.
Are you going to do this? The only thing that I, just right around now is.
Fred, the only person that can recognize you is me.
Can't just one way.
We're in a school, maybe.
Continuously one time. It's, it's not normal. So somehow, somebody has to give it. And I know the public service and the police, the fire, and the other departments, they're too old to identify themselves in a budget. That's all.
And I think I got a little worried, as we said, it pains me that foreign language is getting increased, that no one is getting to be there. It pains me, but we are, we are riding unsustainable train. And we are about to crash into one another. And there's really no way to avoid it. And, you know, when you've got a town, like, can I almost continue this? But I think it's primarily true for, for the two. Our tax base is presidential. We don't have large industry. We don't have partners. We really don't have any of that. And in our, as Mrs. Rainie moved to, our departments are very rare within this staff. You added, I think, one and a half positions in two years. And those positions actually were bad at half, that had been eliminated after, like, two thousand eight, you know, prior years. So we really, you know, we're very within this staff. And where I'm at is I don't want to see Mass and playoffs from any part of it. I really don't, I don't want to make a lot. We've got, we've got first ones in our town, and we've done well by it. And I'm continuing to do well by it. And I apologize for that. And I also feel that we've done very well by the schools. And I know obviously, are you, but I believe the budget, and I think that we've done well historically. I am in favor of this one time use of money. I've gone back and forth because it feels awkwardly, you know, it's worse than we had. You know, we're, we're setting ourselves up for false, and we may be a bigger next year. And we'll have to talk about that amongst ourselves, and three parties amongst ourselves. We're going to have to talk about a seemingly unsolvable problem, and how we try to, how to do that. Definitely communication can't be improved and it's super, maybe the top specific timeline of not just let's do that, but like, by this date, so let's have this conversation. But I know, moving to the vote, I am in favor. So I will, we'll move to the vote, and we'll go.
All right.
Okay, so it's three, three to two. And I, and I have to say, it pains me because our, we're not going to party when we're going to be in this vote. But this, this board is very, very solidified. I think that's a true statement. And, and I know the people that are voting know we're not doing it like, you know, dancing street and singing. But it will pass, and we will increase the amount that we're giving to the district by one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, from the Woodman's side, I'll start the conversation by saying I do appreciate the school committee and the action right away. That was absolutely, we moved the, the town's will then fall in place. But you are right, what we are doing is narrowly stepping out of the way of disaster this year. That, that collision is what, two weeks away from from happening? Collision that would involve triangle of, uh, let me explain to the Woodman Board what just happened. So with the reduction by the school committee of six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, our budget is something just one of the five point nine six percent budget increase, which is basically our hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight ninety-three over what we had originally anticipated. Use of one time funds is definitely coming to a head at this point. And we know that that clip is dropping off next year, considerable. What I don't want to see happening, can is the boards meeting December, which I thought was a great way to start our budget season. And the way we came here, we've always ranked out five percent. I think we realized what it is. We had actually overcommitted about five percent, but we had committed. And to some good budget, you know, we realized that on the one time money, you know, on Hanson, I think that that December, we started at three and a half. And through again, saw the budget where the numbers comes up at three point seven five. I personally feel that was some of the bottom of the budget process. Not going to sit here and vouch any more way down. And what went on was simple. And I think avoiding that collision, avoiding that is the number one priority. And I always have the number one priority, which is kind of my one, my one chance on the board. So I would seek a motion to increase our assessment to five point nine six percent, which is one hundred and sixty thousand, eight ninety-three over the five percent. Then open it up for discussion.
So moved. Discussion.
Okay, so we're drawing a park one hundred and sixty-nine thousand out of us, and the , ah, out of our, yeah, after funds. I wonder when the school department was in the budget process, was dealing with the budget, if they were to ask all Woodman and Hanson, the towns, what we will, what we could afford in their budget. And then in their budget process, and as they started adding up the dollars, realizing they're getting very close in what they need to cut and not add. So that the towns of Woodman and Hanson don't have to strip their own departments to give to the school. A few years ago, we had to. And I am not going to ever do that again as far as putting the fire department, the police department, the DPW, and town hall, library, all in jeopardy of stripping money from their budgets. Not going to do it. We asked them to look at their budgets closely, and they made some significant cuts. And our town administrator, S. And our town administrator sat with them, had a meeting. They made the cuts. So we could come up with the 5%, which we thought we could handle. But now, it's more than that. And we have to take out one-time money. That would be like the average person taken out of their savings account to pay for their house payment or doctor bills or whatever. And when that runs out, they don't get the services. They lose their house. I don't ever want to see this again. And I think that the schools need to be more vigilant in looking at the monies that it's going to cost to educate, find out what money's coming in, talk to their. Now, the superintendent should be talking with the business manager to find out exactly the funds, what we can afford to not strip the towns and meet their budgets. And then present it to the school committee and let the school committee decide. But then for the school committee to add programs, knowing that it's going to cost the towns and that we have to cut, as far as I'm concerned, is unprofessional. You wouldn't do that in your own household. And I'm very disappointed in the committee doing that. I'm not sure how we're going to vote. I know our department heads have cut where they could cut without destroying their departments. I don't ever want to see a fire engine or an ambulance take three times the amount of time to get to a household because we don't have the manpower. Same thing with the police or the DPW. I don't want to see our library have to close because we can't afford to keep it open. Why? Because the schools ask for more money. They think their budget is more important than the town's. That's how I feel. I'm done.
I wrote something down. I know that we're tight on time, so I'll try to be concise. How do we identify a sustainable path forward that provides incremental growth for our school department? In my opinion, this is the essential question for us to consider. When thinking about this question, I found it helpful to analyze the progress we've made so far. Here's a quick comparison between the 2012 school year and today. In 2012, we had 202 teachers. In 2022, we had 249 teachers. That's a significant increase. In 2012, the student-teacher ratio was 21 to 1. In 2022, the student-teacher ratio was 14 to 1. That's a significant improvement. In 2012, the in district per people expenditure was $9,932. And in 2022, it was $16,339. And the gap between us and the state average has been incrementally decreasing. And in 2012, our student enrollment was 4,320. And in 2023, our enrollment was 3,539. That's a decrease of 781 students. This is important because our enrollment obviously is directly connected to our funding. And that was a big obstacle for us to overcome. So to put it all together, during the long period of time when our enrollment was decreasing, an obstacle, and the support from the state had plateaued, as a community, we were able to increase the size of our staff, significantly improve the student-teacher ratio, and in turn, provide a much better educational experience for our children. For that, I'm certainly grateful. That was 10 years of incremental growth and a trend that we can learn from today. Now, with these factors in mind, let's consider next year. The current senior class is 316 students. 316. To put that in perspective, the average class size in grades 1 through 11 is 264. And 316 is by far the biggest class. The eighth grade class is currently at 287, and the rest are below that number. So it is reasonable for us to assume that our enrollment will drop again and likely by about 50 students. And when that happens, as the past 10 years has demonstrated, and this is an important point, the decrease in enrollment will have a positive impact on the student-teacher ratio. That trend needs to be considered when making this decision today. So here's a dilemma. If we fund, if we fund too little, then we roll the progress that we've made over the last 10 years in the school department. But if we fund too much, then we quickly consume the finite amount of resources that we have for all the town departments and risk our financial stability. So the question is, where do we draw the line? In my opinion, I believe that Mr. Madden's recommended 5% is an appropriate guideline. It provides just enough for the schools to make some incremental growth each year, but it also sets an appropriate limit for the restrictions of Proposition 2.5. It's a good balance between the difficult times, and it provides a path forward for us to follow. Today, the feedback from the 5% guideline is informing us to slow growth a little bit in the school department as a corrective action. Doing so will keep us on that path, and I think we should listen to it. The solution to this problem is not with a significant amount of one-time funds. That will only amplify the problem next year and make us less sustainable as that puts all of our departments at risk. This is moving us off the path. I think we should stay on course and stick to the 5% guideline. Doing so provides us with an incremental growth and sustainable path forward. As I mentioned above, enrollment will likely drop again next year, and that will have a positive impact on the student-teacher ratio. In addition, the administration has been able to strategically adapt to the pressures in the past by moving teachers around, retirements, finding efficiencies, et cetera. It certainly is not ideal to slow down when we've taken three steps forward, but doing so is the responsible thing to do. And most importantly, it ensures that we stay on the right path.
Glad I let Sean go first. That's good. So I support using the one-time funds this year. It gets us over the immediate concern, which is that in a couple of hours, the finance committee is going to start voting a budget that includes, you know, this school assessment. So now it falls, you know, roughly in line with what we've been projecting. And I think that the Article II that they've been reviewing for the last couple of months still holds true, so that work doesn't go to waste. We're able to, using, the technical way we're going to do it is probably shuffle some capital stabilization funds to cover some of the school capital projects, frame some free cash, and pay the balance. So we're just, we're pulling from savings, as Dan said, to make this work. But it does work. It gets us through this year, and it buys us time. And I really urge all three of these boards to use that time in the next year to come up with a solution to this so that we're not back here again next April.
I agree with everything Mr. Kane just said. However, if this does not pass through Whitman now, it's not that we solve any problem. We actually create a worse one, where town departments now possibly face the carnage. And like Mr. Savucci said, I'm not willing to do that. We're in the 11th hour. Something has to be done. A lot of people have gone above and beyond to make the commitment to protect jobs, to protect services to the community. And although this is not, and we all know it, the fiscally responsible thing to be doing. I think we look beyond just the numbers, and we look at who it affects, the families, our friends that are town employees, our friends who are teachers, their children. We're talking jobs. And I'll tell you, we had a fairly heated conversation the other day, and I'm serious about this, that I stood at a school committee meeting a year ago knowing what was coming down the line and was chastised that night. We knew this was going to happen, and it's worse next year. You're looking at $3.1 million for level service. Where does that come from? It's not going, the towns don't even take in that much money. Where is it coming from? So I'm going to repeat what I've said for the last four years. This is the textbook definition of insanity, the way we do this.
Agreed.
Come July and August, we know, it's impending June. And I'm not saying that to scare people. We know that. As we sit here right now, this has to be different next year. There may be different players in the seats, absolutely. But the process has to change. And if the process changes, and we all work together at that point, we are going to find a better outcome. No doubt that there is a better solution than doing this weeks before town meeting. This is, since I've been involved, this is the furthest I've ever seen this go, that we're in this position in the 12th hour. No doubt. I'm going to vote the 160 because of people. Plain and simple. Because of the people in this room, in the back of the room, on each side that this affects, that it's the right thing to do. But it is not the fiscally responsible thing to do. So again, I'm going to put out that cry that this needs to change. Everyone in this room, we have the power to change the way this goes forward. This shouldn't happen again. So we have a motion in the second. I would take a vote on. I urge the members of the Whitman Board of Selectmen. If this should not pass tonight, we are not solving a problem. We're creating a bigger one, where players that had no say in it will now be affected. Mr. Kane.
Just, sorry. Could you just, just because I actually don't have a very clear picture, but how would it play out if this doesn't pass tonight?
Well, how I see this playing out is, we now have had a good faith adjustment by the school committee. So the number is changed, but we are still significantly short. There is still plenty of time to, for these boards and committees to go back all another meeting and change it, if there isn't buy-in. And how it could possibly play out is back to where we started. And I don't think that benefits anyone. I agree with, 100% everyone said, Sean. 100%. It was well thought out. I can't argue. But it's, for me, it's a moral decision tonight. Along in the short of to protect jobs, to protect services for the kids, for our residents. I think this is one of those instances where maybe the wrong decision is the right decision, if that makes sense.
I'll stop the vote, all right? You know how I feel. Okay, you know how I feel. But I'm going to make a decision that's going against how I believe things should be done. And I will start off with affirmative vote on the budget as presented. Only because our backs are against the wall. But I am asking the school committee, next year, to take a closer look and do what you're supposed to do on both ends. Educate the children, but keeping the budget and the two towns in the back of your mind, stating that we'll give the best education we can to the towns to afford and not the education that towns can't afford. So I'll vote affirmative for that amendment.
Yes.
No. And I will vote yes.
So I am sure, since we have town meetings come up, there will be ample opportunity to have conversation, discussion, and shared data. Having said that, we don't have any other business on the agenda. And while some of that was extremely difficult to listen to, I'm not sure this is the appropriate time or forum for us to have a discussion. So if anyone on the school committee is so inclined, I would undertake a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call vote. I don't know if they're still there. Glenn? Motion to adjourn. Michelle? Don?
Yes.
Chloe?
Yes.
All vote yes.
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
You're here. I got six.